So that's pretty much what I've got.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Keely Pierce, is that pronounced, say that again? Porridge. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Keely Porridge. I live at 363 Angel Road, Sanford. My comments tonight is pertaining to water. On October 22nd, there was a public hearing posted by the, hosted by the EPA to force North Carolina DQ and Ashboro to stop polluting the water discharged. Over 1 million people live downstream, including Sanford. Did our elected politicians and water treatment managers submit a comment to the EPA? Why isn't Ashboro cleaning 1.4 dioxane at the source? Why should Sanford bear the costs of Ashboro's toxic polluters? One of those polluters is a company based in India. North Carolina ranks among the states with the highest levels of 1.4 dioxane. Water is the core of life. I have given you a recent article by Lisa Sorg that just came out. That leads me to Butler number three, a gas well created in 1998. If the North Carolina Gas and Oil Commission and local commissioners start exploring the use of Butler number three for a data center, what priority is the water in our community? The mechanical integrity with casings erode over time. This is an issue. This well is grandfathered and not subject to current gas and oil inspection regulations. Butler number three has potential danger to the residents in Lee County. The North Carolina Gas and Oil Commission do meet usually without a quorum. They will be meeting on Wednesday. This proposed data center would be built on property owned by a guy who lives in Florida, and the mineral rights beneath the property are owned by Dan Butler from Southern Pines. Neither one live in Lee County. There are no provisions for data centers in Lee County's current unified development ordinance. Are you planning on accepting a rezoning application? This takes me back to water. Recent counties have denied data centers in North Carolina, including 400 acres in Mooreville. This is Einhardt Family Farm. And 52 acres in Tarboro. This community fought back. No matter what type of data center is built, they all require huge amounts of power, cooling systems that use water to keep them running. Data centers do not offer long-term employment. The potential impact of rate payers from all this demand of electric is huge. The Bloomberg analysis in September found electricity now costs as much as 267% more for a single month than it did five years ago located near these data centers. I'm looking forward to your actions to protect the community.
Thank you. Just a question, please, Keely. You handed us a document, but what is the source of this document?
Inside Climate News. I'm sorry. I can, I can send you a PDF of it.
Inside Prime?
Inside Climate News. Lisa Sorg has been an environmental journalist for many years.
That's fine. Yeah, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure I was writing down the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is old business and Thomas Mears.
Hello, good evening. Sorry. Good evening, County Commissioners, staff and residents. Mr. Neil Goche has submitted a zoning text amendment application requesting an additional, that additional language be added to the UDO's supplemental development standards regarding hotels, motels and tourist courts. The current language requires a 50-foot minimum distance between all quote hotel and motel buildings and parking, end quote, and any quote property in a residential zoning district, end quote. That's the current standard. Excuse me. Mr. Goche's proposed language adds a conditional exception to this clause. And I'll quote the full text of the proposed new language that is before you. Quote, "Except if the adjacent property is both vacant and larger than 20 acres in area, in which case, a minimum of 20-foot separation shall be required between the property line and all parking areas." In such cases, the minimum separation between the property line and hotel slash motel buildings shall remain 50 feet. So in essence, just to kind of simplify that, wherever a hotel is built or being proposed to be built up against residential property, the buildings and the parking have to be 50 feet away. The exception that is proposed here just allows for parking to be 20 feet away if that residential property that is next to the hotel, proposed hotel site, is at least 20 acres in size and is currently vacant. So it's very niche, very tailored, intended to minimize how frequently this could possibly come up. The Joint Planning Commission reviewed this text amendment and gave initial approval for the request to proceed earlier this summer. The Sanford City Council approved this text amendment as proposed on August 5th. And the Broadway Town Commissioners approved the text amendment as proposed on September 22nd. Lee County Planning Board met on Monday, October 20th and unanimously recommended approval of the text amendment as written, with topics of discussion being the conditions of the language intended to limit the impact of these changes, limit the impact these changes could have on hotel development in the county, and the pragmatic need for the UDO's language to stay consistent with the town and the city. So I will pause there for any questions you might have.
Questions for Thomas. Commissioner Sharp?
None, thank you.
Commissioner Reeves? Commissioner Vorbeck?
I think my only question is, I'd be curious. So we're cutting off 30 feet in the, so what was the planning board's, their concerns?
They didn't have any concern, the Lee County Planning Board did not have any, I don't want to put words in their mouth, they didn't echo any concerns. It was more of, one, a topic of discussion was, in the county, if a hotel is going to have septic, the land is going to be so large that space isn't really going to be an issue anyway. And two, two, that the, it was such a niche, really, really specific condition, and it was intended for a specific site in the city of Sanford, and it was intended and proposed so conditionally and so specifically so as not to rock the boat for other jurisdictions, quite honestly.
And we talked about that, the last meeting was, for the hotels to be able to build, they would need to be in the city limits regardless, kind of thing, right? That was kind of...
Potentially. I'm no septic expert, but I mean, if you're going to have a big towering hotel, you probably need a huge septic system. So 30 feet of gap of buffer probably, probably is not going to enter into the equation in that situation.
With, and then that we're still maintaining that, whatever's bumping up against it is 20 acres plus, correct?
20, 20 acres plus and vacant.
And vacant, yeah. Okay. All right. I appreciate it. Thank you.
And that's, and just to clarify too, that's just the parking. The building still has to be 50 feet regardless.
Okay. No, I do. Thank you for the clarification, yeah. All right. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Connect? Commissioner Lovick?
I'm good. Yes, sir, no mind. Thank you.
Commissioner Martin?
Motion to approve.
Have motion to approve the UDO text amendment revising the development standards for hotels, motels and tourist courts. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on. Planning Board recommendation for Broadway 87 subdivision preliminary plant off of Thomas Kelly Road under new business. Thomas is here again.
It is my honor to introduce to you our newest subdivision planner, Ms. Catherine Sheeran. She's a very recent ECU grad and a Lee County native, born and raised here. So I'm happy to introduce her. We've thrown a lot at her in the last six months. As you know, we're a growing county, and she has handled it wonderfully. So I'll turn it over to her. This is Catherine Sheeran.
Good evening, Catherine.
Good evening. It's nice to meet you all.
We are a very pleasant board to work with.
I have a brief presentation, as well as you all should have, an 11 by 17 paper copy of the overall site plan for Broadway 87. Broadway 87 NC Investors LLC is seeking to approve approval of a preliminary plat to create a 52-lot major residential subdivision for single-family detached homes. The development is located off of Thomas Kelly Road. A soil report prepared by Earthly Element Soil Consulting is included as an attachment for your review. The development also features a centralized internal mail kiosk location for USPS delivery and a pickup, delivery and pickup and a school bus stop. The site is in southwestern Lee County, north of the town of Broadway, near the Harnett County line. It is on the north side of Thomas Kelly Road between Buckhorn Road and Bradley Road. The site is not located in a flood hazard area or watershed. This subdivision will be served by public water to be extended from Thomas Kelly Road. Future residential development on these lots would be served by individual private septic systems that must be approved per the North Carolina General Statute's requirements and the Lee County Environmental Health Department prior to the developer or individual lot owner securing a building permit to construct a house. Thomas Kelly Road, SR 1543, is an NC DOT-maintained public roadway with a 60-foot right-of-way width. Staff has reviewed the preliminary plat drawings in conjunction with the Sanford Lee County Technical Review Committee and determined that the plans comply with the UDO subdivision design standards for the residential agricultural zoning district with the following exception. The design illustrates more than 30 lots, being 52, with only one exterior, exterior access and entrance point or exit. The applicant has submitted a major subdivision exception application, which is included in the agenda packet, which provides the rationale for the design with only one exterior access point, entrance, exit. It should be noted that the Lee County Fire Marshal has reviewed the subdivision design, conferred with the applicant about their requested exception, and is amenable to this project moving forward. The Lee County Planning Board met on Monday, October 20th and recommended by a unanimous vote that the county commissioners approve the preliminary plat for Broadway 87 subdivision. This recommendation included the approval of a subdivision exception to allow one point of access. Pause there for questions. And the applicant is also here to answer any questions.
Questions for Catherine. Commissioner Martin?
I don't have any questions. Thanks.
Commissioner Lovick?
Just for clarification, and Thomas may have to step in and help you. I think this is one of the cases where, a little while back, we decided to move where the process were, the only exception in this particular plot is, is the one entrance and exit. So it meets all the other criteria where it can move on through with no problem. It's just, just one exception.
That is, that is generally correct. I'll clarify for the board too. So our UDO requires any subdivision that exceeds 30 lots to have two ways in and out. That is two fully functional road connections, right? So connections to exterior existing roads. We have in the past allowed like a gravel emergency access point. The reason that 30 was in the UDO and that UDO language was written in 2006 is that the state fire code required two ways in and out once that 30 lot threshold was hit. You may remember for the McMillan Lane subdivision and I believe one other, Riverfall, maybe not Riverfalls, I can't remember now. But we've had subdivision exceptions like this in the past. The state legislature in the last six months or so, maybe a year, has changed that 30 lot threshold to 100. And as a result, a lot of counties and cities have moved to that as well. We are just a little behind, but we do have a Joint Planning Commission meeting scheduled for December where one of the little cleanups will be to change that 30 to 100 so that we won't have this issue anymore, so.
So it doesn't hurt their insurance, fire insurance?
It, it does not, to my knowledge, in that the Fire Marshal for both the city and the county have now said, hey, we can't stop this. We can't hang our hat on the fire code anymore. So I imagine Department of Insurance will also kind of fall in line with that. That's my guess, I believe, so.
Any other questions?
No, I just want to make sure this is clarified that really there's no difference. They wouldn't even have to really come for us if it wasn't for that one exception.
That, that is correct. Their design complies with the state, state standards. Our UDO just has not been updated to match the state yet, but we're, we're working on it, so.
I'm so glad to know what our next assignment is on the JPC. Thank you. Commissioner Connect, any other questions? Commissioner Vorbeck?
You know I do. So remind the public what the lot sizes are for these.
40,000 square feet.
So goes into our, fits in. All right, so lot 33 and 52, do we have an idea on from entering subdivision to getting to those lots, what the time is to respond? Just from those.
I apologize. I do not know that question. I could ask Aaron Bullard for that question. I will, I will say Aaron didn't have any comments for this.
I know. So I guess here's where I start to kind of question, and I'm probably not even in a position to question. And I know you said that the state has gone to 100 homes. I guess I start to, and it's not, I'm not questioning the Fire Marshal, so it's also, I think they are up against, they're rubbing up against the demand for the amount of houses we need and how we can respond. So Fire Marshals can see that there's no problem, but then what do we do if another subdivision comes into this type of situation? So what was the issue with not creating that second, secondary gravel road exit that you had mentioned?
Sure. I could, I could answer that too. So one, the, the shape of the lot and the fact that it really bottlenecks on Thomas Kelly Road means that there's no, there's no real meaningful way to have a gravel road access. Like if you had one running parallel to the road, the internal road that's proposed, it wouldn't really serve much purpose because if there's a gas leak or a flood in that area in the front, it's going to impact the gravel road as well. They did initially propose a connection to Chicken Farm Lane. If you look at the top left where that little,
Loop is, cul-de-sac?
That's correct, where the, where the cul-de-sac is. They initially proposed that, but one, we felt that that was not adequate because Chicken Farm Lane is just a private easement on private property. And legally, I don't know that we could require or allow that because when someone grants an easement for a couple of farmers, quite honestly, to get back to their land, I don't know that they, that's a big jump to go from that to 52 lots worth of residential traffic and potentially fire trucks coming through.
I appreciate that. So the other option is, what, how many lots can they go under our curtain, current ordinance?
Under our current ordinance, 29 is what would be allowed.
29 to 52?
Yep.
And we still maintain the 40,000 acreage?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Yep. And with the state statute, that could go up to 99. Like you could have a 99 lot cul-de-sac, essentially, so.
I also, yeah. I also sat in on a city council meeting where the response time was 14 minutes and they pushed it through, so it's...
Well, I, I share your reaction and...
So it's, and again, if there's a Fire Marshal out there listening to me, I am not condemning you. I also watched a house in my subdivision burn in four minutes. So it's like 14 minutes seems like an eternity versus four minutes. And granted, we were not on, we're not on 40,000, we're on, you know, 15, we're on like 4,000 square foot lots. So I, I'm not saying it's, it's not. I just caution. I guess that's where, where my, my hesitance comes in this. I get we're still in a 40,000, but when you are stuck in a burning building that can go up, in, so it doesn't also, us changing from 29 to 52 doesn't also change the lumber. It doesn't change the rate of speed of the things that burn nowadays. You can also talk to our city fire chief. Things are burning faster than they ever have because of the way they put buildings up. So I get that state has changed their, but the state probably is also, might be changing because the demand is there, not because they assume someone's going to get stuck in a house fire. Like it just is, if you have ever watched a, a house burn and, and people standing outside knowing that their dog is dying in it, like it's just, it's a different scenario. So I guess I am going to be reserved in this, and I don't think this is a good idea. So that's kind of where I'm at on that one. So I appreciate it.
As a former 911 dispatcher for several years, I, I share your concern, but yes, ma'am, just to reiterate...
No, no, I agree. I just, I just, I think, I don't know.
It, the, the state statute changing also kind of, I don't want to say undercut, but it does change where Aaron Bullard and Alex Colazo can no longer, you know, for up to 99 lots, they can't even acquire the gravel emergency access.
They can't, I know. And so, and I just, I think we are, we're butting up against the demand for growth and then human lives are just in that crux, and I don't think that's a fair judgment on it. But if you have ever witnessed a house fire or a car fire, anything that is, we are talking about minutes. We're not talking about, we're not talking about hours. We're not talking about time that people get to react. You've got to be able to get out of there, and especially if it's a two-story building, which I assume some of these are going to be, I don't know, just anyways, just kind of want to put my two cents in that one. So I think there needs to be a secondary exit.
For what it's worth, if I may, just to address some of your concerns too, if you notice there are two stub roads on the northeastern side as well. That is to facilitate further connections if, you know, we, we have no idea what will happen in the future. But if other larger lots do eventually become developments, they can tie into that. It may be something that the concern is...
They can, but it can also change the time of response.
I understand.
If we don't add another fire station. So this, I mean, fire is just a different beast. Something to, I mean, it's one of those one-off scenarios that you never want to think is going to happen and you got to have to always plan for? So, so anyways, just my concern, I do believe there needs to be a secondary. I just, I've literally witnessed a house burn down from a second floor to a first floor in four minutes and then catch fire on the next house over. So, and it was quick. I'm done.
Thank you. Commissioner Reeves? Commissioner Sharp? Okay. Do I have a motion to a plant, to approve the Planning Board's recommendation for Broadway 87 subdivision preliminary plat off of Thomas Kelly Road? And you do have three possible motions to make. Motion option one, two, or three.
I'll, I'll put a motion to approve, but my, my internet is not loading, and so I can't read through my options. I'm going to put motion to move through motion, number one.
Motion is the Board of Commissioners approve the proposed preliminary subdivision plat because it appears to comply with the RA zoning dimensional and density standards and appears to comply with the new state law regarding access. Any further discussion? That is the motion. Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Did you get that, Madam Clerk? One opposed. Thank you very much. Moving on. Next item on the agenda is the Lee County Athletic Park fees. Joseph Keel. And before you get started, Joseph, I just want to make a comment. As you know, we have soccer fiends on the family. I have been to the athletic park a number of times watching soccer games, three-in-one weekend in the rain on the all-surface field. And I walked by the, the opposing team, visiting team from out of, out of the county. And I ask them where they're from, and then I ask them how they like our facility. And they're all just envious of what we have. So I just want to say compliments on that regard to the commissioners, to the board, to the planning, to the citizens that helped. Truly a gem in the community, and we want to keep it that way.
It is, it is definitely a gem, something to be proud of. I think it's probably one of the best athletic parks in the state. And I'm just echoing what we're hearing from all the other tournaments as well. So we had a very good kickoff. We've been at the athletic park now for seven, eight weeks. We had some introduction fees that were approved back in April of last year. And now that we're out there, we're seeing that we're being basically overrun with tournaments. The demand for that sports complex has been awesome. Going and looking at other fees at comparable sports complexes around the state. Parks and Rec is recommending that we adjust the fees for 2026. We are getting ready to go into the bid process for tournaments and the monthly fees. So we have already done our due diligence and talked with every entity that rents out there and gone over what these new proposed fees are. Nobody batted an eye at it. Everybody anticipated an increase, and they're all willing to pay it. The Parks and Rec Board also recommended these fees at our October meeting. Just to go over a few numbers with you, looking at the long-term monthly rentals, when you look at our proposed fee for grass, hourly fees at $40 an hour, still with the monthly rate that we have to really cater to our local groups to make sure that we're taking care of our own here in the county. You're looking at a 70% cost reduction by them signing up for the monthly fee instead of paying by the hour. So that, that takes them from paying $40 an hour down to $11.71 an hour. On the synthetic turf, going from paying $75 an hour to $6,500 a month, that's a 53% cost reduction, bringing their hourly rate down to $40. So we're trying to accomplish a couple of things here. One, take care of our groups here in Sanford, but also be competitive with our outside tournaments. And make sure that the tournaments coming in, they know the product that we're able to give them, and they're willing to pay. So I'll pause there for any questions.
Questions. Commissioner Sharp?
I don't have any questions, but I think we talked about it early on that we probably wasn't charging enough, but we wanted to see how we started out and see how the demand was. And the man has...
Yeah, we set a tournament every weekend except the one weekend that it rained us out.
Right. So, and I think we said in our meeting that, you know, as long as, as long as they'll pay it, we need to get it. In the beginning, we didn't think we were charging enough anyway, so.
That's right.
Yeah.
And I think that was just a good approach, you know, at the very beginning to have those introduction fees, get the complex running, and then kind of fill it out from there.
Any other questions? Commissioner Sharp?
No, no, sir.
Oh. Commissioner Reeves?
What was your board vote count?
Seven oh.
Seven oh.
They approved it.
They approved, yeah, I understand. I just want to know what the count was. And number two, did you have a comparison park fee list to go by?
Yes. So we, we looked at Walnut Creek for our baseball and softball tournaments.
You said Walnut Creek?
Yes, sir.
Located where?
Up in Cary, yeah. They're $1,700 per day. So we're, we're proposing to go to 1,500. And then we looked at Ashboro for their multipurpose soccer and football fields, and Rocky Mountain as well. And Apex. So if you look at Apex, they're $100 a hour for the synthetic fields. And we're proposing just to go up to 75. That's our closest competition. That's our closest competition.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Vorbeck?
Um, I, I, I'm gonna kinda piggyback on, on Commissioner Sharp's. So, we kind of did mention that the prices were a little low to start with, and we're, so that was April to November, so we're seven months down the road. Did I do math correctly? I didn't do math correctly. We're at four eleven, six, seven. Anyways, um, I think I just, we undershot to try and gain interest, and we're six, seven months down the road. Um, do you foresee this being another six-month evaluation and we change it again? I guess, I wanna also, I, I agree. I thought our prices should be where they're at, what, what you're proposing, I guess is what I'm, I'm trying to say. So, it's, are we gonna be reevaluating six months from now when we said these prices would be firm for a year? And I, and I don't have the transcripts from April, but I feel like we also said in April we would address it a year from now, and we're not in that year. So, um, do you foresee, like, this being a every-six-month type of thing, or are we gonna be able to kind of get prices in a steady match to be able to get us into the same, um, I guess, fields that are being requested in fulfillment and type stuff? So, I guess that's the only question I have, is just the change in prices so soon after I feel like we said we would allow a year to see what it, it does.
Yeah, I don't foresee, um, us reevaluating ev- every six months, given the fact that we opened the park in the middle of a fiscal year, um, and then going into it as a brand-new park. I think that's why we're in the position that, that, that we are now with 2026 coming up, and us going out to bid, um, tomorrow, um, for these tournaments. Uh, we wanna make sure that we're competitive going into the next calendar year.
Okay.
And then, um, you know, the Parks and Rec Department, along with the Parks Board, we look at fees in April, um, of, of every year. So-
Okay.
Um, we was probably looking at this in 2027-
Okay.
-of April.
Okay. All right, I just-
Barring nothing drastic happens.
Right, I know.
Right?
I know. I just, I wanted to make sure we're kind of all on the same page, that we probably should've been on this mark to begin with. But thank you for the LCAP, and it's been a wonderful facility, so.
Commissioner Connect?
So, what do, what does the local get compared to out of town? Do we get to pick the tournament dates first?
Uh, well, when it comes to the baseball and softball tournaments, that's where we've had the demand from. All of those are coming from outside. Uh, we have not had a request for a multipurpose field tournament yet.
Okay, so, I'm, I'm just asking, so, what, what is policy, and does the, does the local community, um, groups get to pick first, or do they get a-
So, they've already contacted us, and say, say for instance, SASSL, they want January through June.
So, they, they've got first dibs, the local get first dibs?
They, yes.
That's all I'm asking.
Yep, absolutely. And then, um, outside of flag football, um, that's the only thing that we see impeding on a local group not being able to get on the field.
Thank you.
That was from this past fall, and, uh, I can tell you, it, it really worked out well, and we had four different groups out there, Parks and Rec, the college, Carolina Football, and SASSL, and everybody got exactly what they asked for.
Excellent.
Commissioner Lovick?
I have no questions, but thank you so much for what you've done, you're doing, and I know you're gonna do, and let's keep it as nice as we can. That's where a lot of parks fail. They have something nice, and they let it get run down, and, and hopefully we won't do that. That's right. Thank you.
Commissioner Martin?
Did I understand you correctly that you're going to implement the new pay schedule for locals, uh, that will reduce by 53% in one circumstance and, and a different percentage?
Yeah, I was just giving you like a comparison, um, if a group were to come in and rent just by the hour versus the fees that we have, um, really been the first department to do with the monthly fees, um, just giving you a comparison on the percentage that we're save, that we're saving our groups from paying.
And you're offering that to the locals only, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Um, what, what do you, like, what do you expect the differential to be in these fees from, I realize that you're not completely through, but from, from start to present and implementing these new fees, what do you think the delta, the difference is going to be?
Um, on the monthly from the local groups, it's gonna be an increase of $3,000 for the entire year.
Okay.
Um, for the tournaments, for the outside groups, we're looking at an increase of $25,000.
Okay. And then, just a final question. I, I know we were talking earlier about the, the fields really taking up, pummeling, I think was the word we used. Um, I, I guess my question is more toward cost of maintenance. Do you feel like it's, we're, we're falling where we thought we were going to fall, so that, for example, this 25 would actually, you know, be a 25, uh, and, and, you know, not in the red, but, you know, like, how it's gonna balance out?
Yeah, so we're really, uh, way early on that-
Yeah.
-given the fact that we need the fields to go through four seasons. Um, but from the maintenance that we've done and the maintenance that we've budgeted, um, our, our budget looks fine for November. So, I would say what we've budgeted is fair.
Good. Thank you. No questions.
Question I have, Joseph. Uh, these fees, when I went through the abstract and the cover sheet here, the, there was no designation on when they're going into effect.
I would like for them to go to effect Jan- January 1st-
January?
Of 2026.
2026, okay.
And then, one fee that I didn't mention, but just to stay competitive here in the county, um, with the outside tournaments, uh, Tranway Park has been set at 825 since 2020. Um, given the fact that, uh, we are gonna go up on our fees at LCAP, um, staff has done a great job at giving Tranway Park a uplift. Um, so, we are proposing that Tranway Park also go up to $1,100 per day.
Okay.
And Joseph, excuse me, I think you said that, uh, we're so busy over here that it's made, could you explain that?
Yeah, so we went this entire summer, uh, with no tournaments at Tranway Park. Um, as soon as we started hosting tournaments at LCAP, Tranway Park then started getting booked up to. So, we have now not only held tournaments every weekend at LCAP, but also at Tranway.
Are you posting the rate change currently for?
Yeah. So, the, so the current rate at Tranway is 825, and we're gonna go up to 1,100. That's what we're proposing.
Any further questions for Joseph? Do I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Have a motion to approve the Lee County Athletic Park fees that'll go into effect of fiscal, uh, calendar year, January 1, 2026. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next item on the agenda is consideration of future plans for the current Lee County Main Library Building. Assistant Manager Jennifer Gamm.
All right. With the, um, impending grand opening of the new library site just down the road from us in the spring of next year, I am bringing this to you to seek your direction and guidance on the potential sale of the current library site at 107 Hawkins Avenue. Uh, we had a private appraisal performed on this property that resulted in a conclusion of a value of $3,850,000. Um, this site is composed of 1.34 acres and approximately 19,000 square foot facility. Um, the board in, in its discretion may impose any conditions on the sale of the property, including a, a minimum bid amount if they so choose. Um, so I'm seeking your guidance on whether or not to proceed with the sale. It would go through the upset bid process, so this would take some time. Um, if it were to sell or go into contract prior to the library vacating the building, we could certainly impose conditions to cover that contingent on the library vacating the building. I don't anticipate that just because these transactions take time. Um, but right now, we're just, you know, getting your authorization to move forward. This would, a final disposition would need to be approved by the board, um, you know, upon that final bid coming in. So, this would require multiple, um, approvals of the board anyway. So, seeking your direction tonight, and any, um, conditions you would like to propose if we are moving forward with the sale.
Questions or conditions? Commissioner Martin?
What are some examples of other conditions other than a minimum bid?
Um, I mean, other than the, the, the timing, you know, with the library, um, I don't know. Whitney, can you think of anything right now?
Not really. I think that the minimum bid is the most important.
Yeah, okay.
And this is kinda, I mean, even though this is real property, kinda similar that, to what we did with the generator sale, we just want, you know, to, to recommend, um, that, to ensure a value is obtained on the property. Um, sometimes if you impose that conditional value, it, um, it prevents some folks coming to, to try to, to, um, put proposals in for less than fair market value. So, if it's the board's intention to try to get a fair market value or better, it'd be recommended to go ahead and impose that condition, so you don't get bids that you wouldn't otherwise consider.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
No questions, but I'm perfectly fine with the, the minimum and the condition of when the new library comes on board. That's all. Thank you.
Is that a proposal for a minimum?
What's that? I'm sorry, I didn't hear it.
Say, say that again, Commissioner.
I said I'm perfectly fine with setting the minimum bid, our staff said, or we come together and set a minimum bid to help put out some of the lower bidding process.
Do, do you have a number?
The, I think, the market value?
Market value?
Um, well, it's staff, staff's recommendation, and we put this in the agenda item to set a minimum bid value, um, reflecting the appraised value of $3,850,000, but the board can decide upon the final value.
That I'm not an expert in, so.
Okay. Can I, can I ask a question on this?
Please.
Can you look back to me? Uh, I'm, I'm also not familiar with, with how appraisals work. Was there, was there a single appraisal, and that is, you know, that, that's the, the comfort level that we have? We're comfortable with the one appraisal on the value of that?
So, we had a commercial building appraisal performed, um, by, by a company that certified to do that. Um, you know, they used a number of comps to arrive at their value amount. I will say, you know, I had a brief discussion with, um, Jimmy today at, at an event, um, with the Sanford Area Growth Alliance, and he knew of the value and felt that it was a fair reflection of the market. So, um, it, it would be our intention, if we were to proceed with the sale, to utilize some of our community partners to promote that sale.
Thank you.
Commissioner Connect?
I'm good, thanks.
Commissioner Vorbeck?
Um, I guess the question I have is on the appraisal. So, if we start taking bids, and then, I'm just going off of, I've never bought a commercial property, so I'm gonna go off a residential questionnaire, is it, we're in the due diligence process, if anything comes up, are we selling as-is, are we selling with, are they gonna be able to allow to an inspector to come in, and we've gotta fix some things that, you know? So, I guess that's my first question.
Those are conditions.
We generally sold properties, and I'm, I'm reflecting this based off of our experience on the surplus process, as-is, where-is, um, so.
Okay.
I would think we would allow the, at least, I don't know, allow someone to at least do an inspection. Now, whether or not we say we're gonna do anything as a result of that inspection, but I would imagine that someone purchasing might want to at least perform an inspection to see the, the status of the building.
Okay. No, and I, and I don't, I guess that's, I mean, they're allowed to do, obviously, whatever they want to do, and their due diligence type thing. So, my question was, are we gonna be presented with an option of fixing things, anything that comes up? Are we gonna be, like, this is our, you know, our minimum bid with as-is type of property, and we move forward from that? Is that what we're presenting?
I think it would be our intention to keep things as simple as possible with the minimum bid.
Okay.
Um, you know, if the board chooses not to impose a minimum bid and consider any, you know, proposals that are submitted, I, you know, I think that is the board's discretion.
Okay. All right. Um, that's it. Thank you.
Commissioner Reeves?
Have you, has anyone had a discussion with the city of any interest in this building?
No, sir, I have not. We have mentioned to them that we would be selling it, and they've not asked us anything about it.
I thought we were looking for jail property at one time.
They are not interested in talking to us about any property they have with, for the jail.
Well, that's mighty neighborly.
Actually, I don't know that there are many people at the city who know that, um, we had looked at that property back in the early 90s for the potential signing, and that's where we had planned to put the courthouse, um, our new courthouse, and until, um, things changed, and we had to move. So, I think, I think maybe even, Mr. Reeves, you were the one to, um, inform me that we even had an option on it. It was that far that we did have an option, or it may have been Mr. Cowan I was talking to that told me that the other day.
Kind of like board changes. Let me ask you about your minimum bid. You brought it down, for example, 4 million. You allow them to go in and see what needs to be done, and come back and try and negotiate. If it gets beyond the, below the 4 million, does that kick 'em out, if you understand what I'm asking? If I go in and I find 700,000 work of work?
I think, well, I think what we could do is, you know, if, if the board's inclined to take a minimum va- value on this, and we come to find, you know, somebody's intending to set the minimum value, and they find some conditions that would otherwise reflect a different kind of value, I think we would do a reasonable assessment to see whether the board would be interested in considering alternate conditions or modifying that value. We wouldn't necessarily, you know, you know, try to, um, prevent those transactions from occurring for that reason. So, I think that the intention here on setting that condition is just to make sure that you, you're not getting a, um, contention of bids that you wouldn't otherwise, you know, um, consider out the gate that are exceedingly lower than fair market value.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes, just from, from what I know about building, I'd be in favor of, uh, moving forward to, to sell. That's it.
Is that a motion?
Excuse me?
Is that a motion?
Uh, move to approve.
Okay.
I think we have a question over here.
We need some guidance, so, do you quit?
Haley's got all that.
Mr. Chair, one more question.
Yes, sir.
Um, did the appraisal take into account of any, of what's there now, the way it is? Is that what the appraisal was considered at?
Yes, um, you know, and having observed a few of these now, I don't, they do not do a thorough condition assessment, you know, like when we go through the due diligence process and have a, um, you know, a commercial building inspection done.
But they're-
But they take a general look on site to see what the, um, the general condition of the property is, and, um, and make their value assessment based on that.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the, setting the minimum bid value at the 3.85 million-dollar mark for the library.
Okay, so the guidance is given to set the minimum bid at 3,850,000 dollars. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
It's one quick question. Do we have any language when, when people put a bid in, and they get their due diligence? Do they have to, because we take it off the market, do they have to pay anything if they don't want it in the end?
I'm sorry, I was having trouble here.
If they're in a due diligence appearance, do we have fees for that, for them when we take it off the market?
Um, I think this would be a somewhat unique contract, depending on the status of the library. If the library has already vacated, I think we can kinda keep it pretty simple and eliminate some of those fees and transactional fees. But if, if they're still in there, we're gonna have to do a little work to-
No, 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 I'm just talking about if a bidder comes along, a person wants to buy it, but they want their due diligence period to, to take a look at it, but they want it off the market, right?
Mm-hmm. So, are you asking if there would be a, like, an earnest money deposit-
Yeah.
-to encumber that? I think, you know, I'm not sure what, what the county attorney might like to do. This would be a unique transaction for us.
Yeah, this would be the first time we've sold a commercial property. Um, so I think there's some good questions that were brought up tonight that I just need to look into. Um, but I think that the main thing was at least getting the board to tell us, like, yes, you're okay, and this is the amount- yes, you're okay, and this is the amount, because we'll run it like the surplus property. So whenever we do receive an offer, we'll still have to bring it back to you all for an approval to advertise and move forward. But, um, and with that, they have to put down a deposit. Normally, though, if they don't, if they, if they, if they don't get the bid, um, like, they pay for the advertising fee and that, they don't get that back. But good questions, and I'm, I'd have to work through some of that process.
Yeah, so if this is, if it's going to take it off the market and it being more extended period beyond the surplus bid process, I think we would want to condition that on some sort of.
No, surplus property in the past, we, people are making their own bids. We're setting the, we're setting the cost now, right?
Setting the minimum.
And you said it has.
You're setting a minimum.
We set a minimum, and then if somebody places a bid, we go ahead and advertise, and there's an upset bid process. So there's a period of time somebody could come in and place another bid to upset it. But if they don't, then, I mean, that would have to come back to the board for final disposition. So you probably recall the initial resolutions you've approved, along with the final resolutions, before that sale actually proceeds to closing.
So once, going through the upset bid process, once you've received that final bid and another one doesn't come in 10 days, you basically then are taking action on that bid. So then after that, they choose to pull out, because you'd be working through that agreement. So it's basically off the market when that final bid is received, that you accept.
Oh, then they have how long?
And something's through.
And they have, how long do they have to honor it?
Another 30 days.
We would have to work those details out.
You don't have a contract, right?
Yeah, we'd have to work that out with the contract.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is manager's report regarding franchise information.
Yes, sir. No, this is me. And, um, so I wanted to make sure everybody had received, and the notice was given that the application from WRA Stanford LLC, Doing Businesses Liberty Waste Solutions, for a disposal facility franchise, has been withdrawn, and that letter is in your package, plus it was emailed to you earlier. Also, based on the board's direction to prepare a first reading of a franchise ordinance for Medex Medical Transport Services, Inc., staff has prepared a new public hearing notice, and a public hearing will need to be held on November 17th, 2025, specifying that the franchise can be issued to either First Health of the Carolinas, Inc., or Medex Medical Transport Services, Inc. So I believe Whitney has spoken to each of the board members about that also. Also, I wanted to let you know that there has been some discussions and actions today. We are waiting for confirmation, but it appears that the federal government is going to confirm that the state will be able to issue half of the SNAP benefits this month. We are waiting, though, on exact knowledge of how those allotments will work and how it will be handled. But hopefully, there will be some relief for the SNAP recipients, not 100% yet, but at least some relief this month, and hopefully, this federal shutdown will come to an end, hopefully, before we get into December. So, that's it.
Does this impact Meals on Wheels?
Excuse me?
Does this impact Meals on Wheels?
Um, I'm not sure, because we don't, it doesn't affect what the senior services delivers yet.
Thank you, that's one question, thank you.
Yet.
Questions for Lisa, Commissioner Sharp?
No, I'm fine.
Commissioner Reeves?
No.
Commissioner Vorbeck?
No, sir.
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Mr. Lovick?
No.
Mr. Martin?
I don't have any questions on the things that, that you spoke of, but I, I do have just a, I know you're working on the five-on-five with, with the school, just a, I'm wondering if we could get some feedback where, on where we're at with that second meeting. I think we're, I don't, I don't want to misspeak here, but I, I think you've met at least once, right?
Right, I've met with the superintendent, yes. Um, I am working, trying to gather numbers, and right now, it's, I, I will not lie, I'm frustrated, because everywhere you look, there's different numbers. You would think you could go to Department of Public Instruction, Statistical Profile, and get consistent numbers, but it's not. It's very hard to try to ascertain numbers when everything over here is based on the school district's ADM. They don't take into account charter students. But then, if I just take into account the charter students for Lee County, and compared, it makes it hard for us to compare ourselves to other counties surrounding us or our population size, because then, you know, I have to go try to figure out how many charter students they have also, to get true accurate numbers. Also, DPI's numbers don't necessarily tie back to the financial statements from the schools, not that anything's wrong, or anything, but the numbers just aren't consistent. So it's hard for me to try to figure that out. So I'm trying to pull some numbers together now, so I can then sit down with school staff to try to find out, you know, what the differences are, and if there's better places that I can go look. So that's what I'm trying to work on now, so that I have good data to work with the schools on, and, and so that we have good data to bring to you all when we talk to y'all.
So the idea is that once the data is confirmed, and not, once we have a good understanding of the data, then we would make a motion to move forward with a five-on-five? Or what's the whole process for that? I, I don't think we've made a motion yet to do that, have we?
There has not been a motion. My understanding, on our board's side, to form a five-on-five committee. I cannot speak to what the board's intent would even be, once we bring information. I just was directed to start working with the schools and to see, you know, where we could gather information, and then we'd go from there. So I don't know what the board's intention is.
Well, I, I'd like to put forth a motion to move forward with a five-on-five. No, we don't need to do that, we don't need to, I don't, I don't need to put that forth tonight. I'm willing to wait until you get your, the numbers together. But that is my intention, to gather some members of our board, to sit down with a couple of, a few members of the school board, so that we can have time to communicate together. That's all for me, thank you.
Just to add clarification to that.
Yep.
It, the intent was, when the Dare County presented it to, I believe, the School Board Association, and the school, the school board chair saw it, she promoted it, gave us some background on it. It was something that was like immediately. But when the Dare County manager briefed us on it, the intent of their program was that the financial director for Dare County, county manager, school superintendent, and their financial director had a number of meetings prior to work out a plan and a progress of how they were going to fund the schools for the next umpteen years. Then they would come back to the so-called five-on-five committee, which would include three members of the school board, three members of the commissioners, to include the manager and the finance director of both, both entities. Then they would work out an agreement on how they would go forward, and then bring it back to the boards for their final decision. That is the, that was the roadmap that they designed to set up to move forward. We're still at the first step with the finance director and the manager sitting down with the superintendent and their finance director. So we're kind of putting the cart before the horse, before they can actually work out the details on what their plans are for the future.
I, I hear you, but let me, let me make sure I understand this correctly. The Dare, Dare County was moving toward a, a sort of a flat tax fee, correct? Like, they, they were, they were giving the school a lump sum of money.
They came up with a funding formula.
Yeah, yeah.
And then they, my understanding from talking to Dare County manager is, under staff worked out method, and then to get, they started talking, I think they went to, one went to their chairperson, then they went to their chairperson, and they decided to form this committee to get the buy-in, and then to take it up. So, you know, yes.
I don't know that that's.
But they had a funding formula.
I don't know that that's where we're going with this, right? Like, we haven't discussed that, and I, I, that's not, I don't think that's where we're, I don't, I'm not suggesting that we are following the Dare County plan for school funding. I'm not suggesting that. I'm suggesting that a five-on-five would be a good way for the Board of Commissioners and the Board of Education to have time to sit down and, and talk with each other. So thank you for working on the finances. I, I know you're, we're moving toward having something that can serve as a foundation of conversation.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, Commissioner comments? Start with Commissioner Martin. I'm sorry.
Commissioner Martin had put forth a motion?
I'm, I'm not going to put forth a motion tonight, thank you.
Okay.
Uh, public comment. I'm sorry, Commissioner comments, yeah.
Commissioner's comments.
Voting, voting this week, let's, City of Sanford. Um, I did want to bring up Meals on Wheels. There's a robust program here in Lee County, if anyone has any needs, or you know of people who fit into that criteria, and they're always looking for volunteers during the day. And I'm, I'm a good point of contact if anybody has any questions on that. And then, um, you know, keeping the sheriff department and deputies and the family of the boy who was killed this past week in our prayers. Thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
My dear, with that, definitely prayers were all involved in that. That's traumatic in every way. I've asked county manager and assistant county manager Angelina to give a small presentation on the difference on the buzz line compared to our COLT system. I think there's some wondering out there in the community, what's the difference, how they work and things like that. So, thank you.
Good evening. Um, so I was asked to just do a very short explanation of the difference between COLT and microtransit. So COLT is, COLT is our paratransit system. And so with paratransit, historically, we've needed advanced notice to provide transportation. So currently, we're operating on a 24-hour advanced notice in order to call and request services to get transportation to wherever you, you're going, you know, medical appointments, shopping, school, any of that. I will say with paratransit, COLT is doing as much as they can to ensure that they can get, if they can, same-day transportation. However, it is not an on-demand system. And so, as some of you all know, we had our ribbon-cutting ceremony for microtransit, which has now been named the buzz line. So this is a city-county partnership, and the difference is, microtransit is an on-demand, uh, public transportation system. So it's going to operate a lot like what you would think of as Uber services. There will be an app, they can also call in, but that is going to be an on-demand transit, uh, public transit system, uh, that you can call and get. The response time we are looking at is about 20 minutes. And so that buzz line and that city and county partnership launches on November 12th. We are doing a soft launch. It will be Monday through Friday, 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. No weekends during the soft launch. December 1st, we are looking at a go-live date where we would operate microtransit, which is the buzz line, and it is very distinctive, it is very different than our COLT's vehicles, in a, a small zone, that zone that was approved by city council. That zone, if you are living in that zone, you can use the app, you can give us a call, and you will be able to access, um, microtransit services and get, uh, transportation services within that 20-minute timeframe. So hopefully, that helps to kind of differentiate that.
And is there a cost?
So.
Can you compare the cost?
Sure. Regardless of whether it's COLT's or microtransit, it is $5 each way. For microtransit, that $5 can be an entire family. So if you schedule a ride with microtransit, you're in that zone, you, or you call and say it's a mom and her kids, and, and they are going to Walmart, for example, it would be $5 for that entire family, $5 there and $5 back. But that is the fare.
Good, thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
I just thought that was important information for the public to hear, since they're going to be seeing two different things in our city and county now. And I think it's going to be a great benefit. Thank you so much for what you've done, staff's done, working with the city, and everybody involved.
Angelina, before you leave, so where could people find out how to download the app?
So the, the app has not launched yet.
Okay.
And so the, we are working, our vendor that we've used is CTS, that's a great question. Um, CTS is working still to finalize that app, and so as soon as it is ready to launch, we will make sure that there's a media campaign.
Perfect.
Where we can instruct people on exactly how to download that app.
So currently, in the soft launch, they can contact who?
They can contact COLT's.
Okay, thank you so much.
I have one more question, Angelina. How will the public know where that zone is? Is there a website that highlights that?
Yes, yes. And it is, I don't want to misspeak on the website, I'm not good with those types of details, but I'm looking at Haley Hall, and she is spitting it out as we speak.
Microtransit.com. Yes, so there is a unique URL or website address, and that is, I just want to make sure I have that correct, I believe it is, yes, www.buzzlinemicro.com.
Perfect, thank you.
And that's available on our website as well.
And I will also say that GIS has assisted in this project. They have created some really nice maps that are blown up, because if you look at the map, that's the, the zone map, it's really hard to see kind of what sections are a part of that map. If you're on the app, and when the app launches, unless you're in that, that scheduled area, it will actually not allow you to book. So it, it blocks you from doing that. However, we're, we're working on distributing those maps that GIS created, because they section them out, and you can actually see the streets, so you know exactly what maps. But all of the information that we're working on, it should be available on that website.
Still, Commissioner comments, but any comments or questions for Angelina while we have her captive? Any further questions? Thank you, Angelina.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Vorbeck?
Um, I just, um, I'm going to read a little sub-part of an email that I received, and then my reply back, because I just kind of, on this, I know in our, our meeting two weeks from now, we're going to be, and then, we're going to be talking about this EMS franchise, which is, comes up every five years, and, and obviously, a very big deal in our community. But, um, I received an email that I felt was a very genuine response, and just kind of wanted to say, money should never be an issue when it comes to protecting the most sacred things in life, and that's someone's life. With that being said, I think you can present that as an argument to both agencies. You know, there's the lower cost, we're going to get what we pay for type of scenario, and people feel that we're gambling people's lives. And then you've got First Health, that their first contractual agreement is to raise, their first-year estimate is 86%, and then it makes people have to question if they can afford, if their care on an, if needed, requirement, is also makes them gamble with their everyday life decisions. When insurance rates are now quadrupling for some, um, the dollar is ruling whether good or bad, and I think that's where we find ourselves as taxpaying citizens, is obviously, I currently reside in the county and, um, and the city, and then as elected officials to quote-unquote spend the taxpayers' money accordingly. So, I know this is a very, um, hard issue, the numbers are such a drastic difference, and I guess I kind of also want to draw attention to First Health, and they have made a very large name-stake in the county. And I think there's some pressure put back on First Health on the cost that they put forth in 2021, when was the first, 20, I don't want to misquote the, 2021, um, on what their last year and what we're paying them, or their contract negotiation, and what their next-year contract negotiation is. I don't know if it's, they didn't quite budget their staffing accordingly, or they didn't think anybody else was going to come to the table too. But I also think First Health has a requirement that if they want to be here for the county, they also have to know that the people that are living in the county are going to have to pay for those services, both with insurance, without insurance, and also as a taxpaying citizen. So I think the statement that the cost is going to cost our taxpayers, and the people who ultimately rely on those services, can go to both entities. And I guess I'm just putting that out there, that both entities need to also understand that. that when you call 911, you expect a really good response, and you expect people to be able to keep you alive from point A to point B, regardless if that's coming to our local hospital, or it's going to wherever they need to be. When you call that number, they expect you to be able to keep their loved one or themselves alive. And I think both also need to understand, and I'm, I'm putting it back on First Health, because the cost to do business is such a large scale. They need to understand, they are asking us as commissioners, and they are asking us as taxpaying citizens, to cover a cost that maybe they didn't quite put into fruition on what it would be, but I do think that they owe it to the citizens. When they put forth a proposal, regardless if they think anyone's gonna come, someone else is gonna come to it, they also owe us to be reasonable in their cost estimate. It's just, it's such a disparity that we shouldn't be questioning whether we're spending money to cover people's lives. And I just, I, so I, I go back to both entities, that when you're putting this forward, people's lives, they don't care what it costs at the end of the day, they care who's at the end of that 911 call and who's gonna come save them. And I think we've gotten, we've gotten lost on that part in both of these contracts. And so I guess I just, I plead to both contracts. When we come to this next discussion, two weeks from now, is, and the public as well, like, this is the time to speak up, this is the time to make sure you've presented the best-case scenario, this is the time that you look at cost and not necessarily making money. No one's lives should be making money on anyone's dime. So I guess that's kind of the last bit of conversation I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Reeves?
Well, mine was similar. When I looked at the date on the minutes, I thought it was a typo and just kept going. I wanted to say on my vote, there's no way I'm gonna automatically turn down $12 million savings, but there's no way I'm gonna accept a lower bid without an explanation of how you got to your numbers, and giving the other party a chance to give me the same explanation. That's all my correction would have been, that I am not saying yes or no to either one until I hear both explain how they arrived at the numbers. So that was it. But when you brought it to my attention that it was the August minutes there, I felt like I did when I walked out this evening, I forgot about the time change, and it was absolutely dark, and I was like, I missed the meeting already. But, you know. It is a very serious matter that we have before us, and thank each of you who may have changed your mind regarding at least letting us have an open discussion on what we think the county citizens should have. Thank you.
Commissioner Sharp?
I agree with what Commissioner Vorbeck and Commissioner Reeves just said, but I don't have anything further, but that'd be all.
Well, if I can just piggyback off of that, just simply state that we'll have another option to discuss, ask questions. You have quite a few bits of information that just got handed to you today. Please take it, study it between now and our next meeting, so that you'll put together some very cogent questions. I just wanna make a comment about the fact that we rely on a lot of individuals in our community to take care of us, the sheriff's department, our deputies. And unfortunately, we had an incident last week that was probably horrendous on its surface with a 13-year-old, but we don't know the full details, other than it's, it was probably a very serious situation, and we trust that the facts will be known. And I just can't say enough, our firefighters, our EMS, our law enforcement, both the city and the county, and our state and federal governments, they put their lives on the line, and it's always, always a risk for them to take. And they, we want them to come home to their families, as well as we get safely back to our families. Without further ado, I just want.
Chairman Smith, I do actually have another thing, sorry.
Okay, please.
Okay. When was half the SNAP benefits coming online?
We were waiting for the exact details. We just understand that that has been agreed, that they would release it, but we don't have the full details. I believe typical, we would have had a first-round distribution for this month for the, a group of recipients, so we don't know how they're going to implement this.
Who's the "we"? Okay, I just, I just wanted to make sure. Okay, and then, next, could we at the next meeting, just because I've kinda forgotten to ask prior to this meeting, and I apologize, at the next meeting, can we get a differentiating between what we voted on three meetings ago on the franchise agreement with the, how we updated the language on the landfill-type of situation?
So you want a copy of the, of the updated, updated agreement?
I would. Yeah, so, and I'm. The solid waste, yes. I'll throw myself under the bus. So when I voted for it, I believed that we were getting a reading of it. I didn't believe we were updating the current contract language. So I thought we would be getting another copy of it and then agree on the language. So I apologize for that. I just, I would like to have a different, or I would, I would love to see the updated language, please, at the next meeting.
Are you referring to the franchise?
Yes, sir. Yeah.
But you're just referring to the, all we did was do the solid waste ordinance.
Yes, yes, ma'am, yeah. I just, if I could get an updated, I guess, again, throwing, I will throw myself under the, the bus on this one. I thought when we voted on it three meetings ago, it was changing it to the extent we would get another reading of it. So that is my fault in not understanding how the procedure went. I would love an, what we, the updated ordinance at the next meeting.
And so the, some statutes require two readings of certain things, and some require one, and some require, and everyone's present and voting in favor. So I'm sure it just kinda got lost with all the.
Yep, it did. And so I just, I would love to, I would love to have the updated, and if we could have, if you could provide me with a copy of the previous. I appreciate it.
Vote to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. Any further discussion? All I want to inform you is to please drive safely, wear your seatbelts, and no speeding. All those in favor for adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now adjourned, thank you very much.